Notice is here by the regular council meeting of the town of Laguna Vista will be held Tuesday 11th, January 2022. This is your bike. Your Lord, but now we're here today. Bring ourselves before you, Father. We ask for your wisdom and guidance. To make the best decision for this. Thank you, Father, for everything we have. I pray to bless this country, bless this city. And I speak, I ask special here over several officers and health members and family members and citizens that stay positive and is sick and pray your blessings and favor over the name of Jesus. Amen.
I believe in the power of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all. Honor, respect, and fire, and I believe in the unity, that is one nation under God.
Mayor Smith?
You're.
Mr. Carter?
You're.
Ms. Howard?
Yeah.
Ms. Tolan?
You're.
Mr. Gonzalez?
It's not because of COVID.
Mr. Royal?
You're.
Ms. Digglebale?
Yeah.
I make a motion to excuse Mr. Gonzalez.
A second.
I'm going to inform by the mayor's support. Excuse us for my apologies.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Royal?
Yes.
Councilmember Digglebale?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
I do for a confirmation of your participation in the maintenance pledge. This is before the open forum, but it's okay. We'll just quickly have the, we do the annual monarch pledge by which we just pledge our support and we have several things that we have to divide by and just want to make sure that everybody's still on board with that.
It should be in here. It's not the package. I'm so sorry about that. Because I saw when it was.
I'll move this to the end of the.
Yeah.
We've already delayed for this.
Yes.
The number four, we'll move this to an open forum. At this time, an audience is allowed five minutes per person to address the council on any talk. There is no discussion or action taken during this agenda. The speaker must identify themselves before speaking. And speaker request form must be pulled in. I have two. So first, I will screen it. Stand here in the middle.
Mayor.
Sure.
Can we wait for Michael Carter to turn? Nice to see you, Michael.
Well, you're doing well. You have five minutes.
Okay. So my name is Corinne Estes. It's really nice to see all of your faces. I live in Laguna Vista, Texas. I have eight invites on nine, Shavat 5782 and January 11th, 2022. By everyone. I want to invite our community to help bring William Rush III and team here as principal of Port Isabel High School again in our region. This is a book that I wrote in honor of Dr. Rush, called Mr. Rush's Cattail, and I presented it at the Point Isabel Independent School District School Board monthly meeting in December, I believe, or July of 2015. Waiting for my code to go through here. Invite number two, help with bringing Lisa Garcia and team as superintendent of the Point Isabel Independent School District here again. Invite number three, relocating Amelda Munivas, current principal of the Point Isabel, of Port Isabel High School to Los Fresnos United in Los Fresnos, Texas. Invite number four, help place creation in proper God-revealing destiny rooted in Genesis 1, Psalm 24:1, Romans 9:8, Ephesians 2:10, Colossians 1:20, Revelation 22 and beyond. Creation includes people and people include creation. Invite number five, invite to receive blessing. So without the blessing, this is the blessing that I'm to bring this evening. Welcome, Blue Flame 47 Flight Crew and Ground Team. Blue Flame 47 is terraforming for the kingdom. Website is www.brewsflame47.com with founders Scott and Sherry Norvell. And this is a general invite. Please register for winter tea and August rush. Invite number six, Keith Moody is a friend of over 35 years of my family and executive with ExxonMobil Oil Synergy at Headquarters in Spring, Texas. Let's inquire about reestablishing ExxonMobil here in the Laguna Grande region. Invite number seven, Reagan and Christie Bond, founders of Independence Coffee Company. There's a picture of them in the back of their coffee here. They sell this coffee at HEB and they support local businesses. And I wanted to introduce them in this way in at this, at this time. I believe that they're connected with our Starbucks here in Port Isabel, Texas. Invite number eight, a more in-depth righteous investigate of Wells Fargo Bank in Port Isabel, Texas. Working with community and peace officers who include law enforcement because the restoration of the American dollar in coin and Bitcoin and both should be able to be in local international and space bank. And we should be able to have accounts at our local bank and, and go to our local businesses free from the fear of trauma. We're here to bring restoration to creation. So if you have any questions, feel free to contact me. My Gmail is Corinne M. Estes or Corinne M. at Corinne M. 047 at gmail dot com. Corinne M. 047 at gmail dot com. And then you can also look into Suster Journeys. This is connected with Blue Flame 47. That's their first book. This is their first book. It's a mystery terraforming for the kingdom. This is available on the website. And also they have a field manual called Terraforming Field Manual and it talks in here. They have colored pictures in the back here. Here's a picture of, well, here's a picture of Sherry Norvell founding, founder of Hoops. Isn't that the time? That's not my like one minute left, morning? And then also to dismantle the, they dismantled on Orlando Simon in New Jersey, the asylum that held the Starni wives. Our homes are not to be assigned. So we have to find another seat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
God bless. Speaker Estes, Mr. Dr. Maston?
Well, good answer. With your 16 years, teaching at the university, and I would like to pose that we think about developing in some manner a sign policy for residential. Briefly came about by neighbor in the street has decided besides his baby boomers, it was lit. He has lights around it now. I mean, has profanity and still has profanity, has talked about police department, talked about golfers, he talked about neighbors. And this is but for to say what he wants and there should be so. And so I started looking and to me it's like, who doesn't have assigned ordinance for residential? Lubbock, Brownsville, San Antonio, 1.5 million people. I mean, who doesn't have assigned ordinance for residential? I mean, including for garage sales, for sale sites, seasonal lights, like Christmas lights. And so somebody doesn't have, I can see that. I mean, somebody has a 10,000 Christmas lights and they're on year round, you know, giving you a tan in your living room, you know, so it's, I don't think, we're not rewriting, we're not writing, you know, rewriting legislation, like no illumination, no moving elements. One of the gen, in most of them are separate. Some of them like Lubbock, you had to have a permit. I looked at, um, but most of them, like it's under the general rule set that includes commercial, non-commercial, and in some people's commercial and residential or non-commercial, we could be extended residential. And it falls under there. And one of the first things, I think they cut and paste it. Cause you know, big San Antonio, 1.5 million, you know, 1.5 million people that covers and it's probably been litigated to death. So the cop, it looks like a lot of cop. Which is fine, but recreate the will, right? But one of them was in general, it was a lot, it was the protection of life, health, safety, property value, welfare, convenience and enjoyment of the, of the. So driving down a street, reading bad words is not enjoyable. So I'm, that's it. I'm going to leave it in your hands and I think we should somehow incorporate something. My favorite saying is that we don't have anything, it's hard for, to reinforce. And or, I mean, I, you can just look down your street and it could be babies. I mean, literally we, we could be babies. I mean, I could get a big sign and point at his house and then my neighbor could get a big sign and point at their house and put whatever we want on. And that's, I'm 55. I've lived in Charlesville, Virginia, so the Rockford first, you can't come up with Texas, Texas. And of course, you know, and I never, in all of my places I've lived, seen somebody with a commercial sized sign in lettering and lighting saying those, saying whatever they want to talk about, whoever with bad words. I mean, he's, he said them all. I mean, remind me somebody has, instead of the F and the S. Got talked to, so he changed the A as hole and he put the asterisks. I mean, so, and then I know he's been talked to, but this other day he's saying something about, I try not to give him any attention, but he had an ass. I don't know. This, I would just propose that everywhere I look, one of, look, it took me about 10 minutes to find it. Uh, we're not, like I said, we're not creating new legislation here. It's already a lot of places. So I say we need to add the version of it. So we don't have no Vegas strikers going down our streets.
Thank you.
And I'm going to go, my, taking care of my mom's.
Thank you.
Thank you. I yield my time back to you guys. Thank you much, guys. I appreciate all of you.
You know, I'm through the numbers since I'm saying. All matters of this item are considered to be team by the council and will be enacted for approval by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is decided, it will be removed from the same and considered separate. So we're considering the minutes from September 21, October 13 and December of 14. Any corrections or thoughts around?
Hey, if I may, recommend that we take minutes for the December 14 meeting off the agenda because that one does require a correction. I noticed it has been listed as being present and I wasn't present for that, for that week.
So why do you want to remove it? We just fixed it.
Well, we, the consent agenda is just.
Everything. Yeah.
December 14. So that would be next, and I could secondly with the correction and then the other two, assuming that we're discussing. There's one. I move to table the consent agenda items.
Is there a second? Is there a discussion? One.
Till later. Why?
Okay.
I moved to table the consent items. Consent agenda items motion.
To win. You have to.
Later.
Later, next month.
I don't have to, I don't have to.
Well, if you typically with the title, if you don't add a, if I'm understanding it correctly, if you just said, well, it just, that's like typically would add a time to it.
I would say that right now we are in extreme situations. Before folks hold in the, yes. I'm just saying till later.
Can we table it to next month?
We can table till the end of the meeting. I don't really care. I'm just saying table it later. It has a motion as it.
There's a motion on the floor made by Mr. Porter to table to later, the medical center, you know, it's seconded by, you know. And bring.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
No.
Councilmember Tolan?
No.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. Um, councilmember Royal?
Yes.
Councilmember Digglebale?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Item seven, discussion, consideration and possible action on each of the following, like financial review of monthly financial, Mr. Estes.
I would like to move to go straight to item G, second session.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion on the floor made by this reporter to immediately go to executive session.
Say, am I Ms. Tolan or Ms.?
I'm sorry, Mr. Digglebale.
Okay. Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
No.
Councilmember Royal?
Yes.
Councilmember Digglebale?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. This is a session at 6:01.
They're going to go, they're going to go.
Oh.
You'll just, if you need me.
So then I just, how's everyone? Yeah, just stop.
Okay.
We're live?
Yes.
Session will be resumed, uh, 7 to 7. We will immediately move into item H, consideration of possible actions to accept or second manager for Mesa. I'll make a motion to accept the reservation with Mesa. Wanted to report right by the mayor, seconded by Mr. Royal.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Royal?
Yes.
Councilmember Digglebale?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Item I, interim city manager, consideration of possible actions to appoint an interim city manager. I'll make a motion to appoint Randy Gonzalez as interim city manager. Motion on the floor made by the mayor, seconded by Mr. Tolan.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Carter?
I can make an amendment to that. I would like to amend that, approve the chief's interim city manager.
There's a motion on the floor.
Was there a second?
Seconded already.
If you try to amend it, it's going to be the, he hasn't got a second. Are we on the?
Yes.
And then the motion was for?
Ms. Gonzalez, I made a motion, seconded at the place, Mr. Tolan, Mr. Order made a. That's where we're at.
I was, I'm sorry, I was walking it. Who was the original motion to appoint?
Ms. Gonzalez.
Okay. And the amendment is?
To change that.
To change.
To change it.
Change the point to chief. I, I don't think we can do that.
That's a good amendment.
It's a little germane. I mean, what's different? It's just a change of the original, of the original.
And it's opposing the right motion.
Because if, if the original motion passes. Then nobody has to vote on the amendment first and then if that fails, and then if that fails, then, then you go to the next. I mean, we, we could, I mean, and then, but. That's just right. Depending on whether it passes or fails, we could have, have a problem. I mean, we can, we can go ahead and take action on the, on the amendment. I, I'm not sure. If it did get a second, we would vote on the amendment and if it passed, then the motion would read, remind to appoint the chief as the interim city manager.
What about primary motion?
The primary motion is about the city manager. He's amending who's being appointed. My understanding of Robert's rules is that's unacceptable then. That hasn't got a second, so it's going nowhere. Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's, it's not going to go anywhere because it hasn't got a second. So the amendment died for lack of a second. We're going to vote on the original motion, but had it been seconded and then we had all voted in the affirmative or majority of us, then the, the main motion would be to appoint the chief as interim city manager. Well, and I, I mean, you're saying that the. I'm, my only concern would be that it couldn't be the proper subject of an amendment because it would defeat the purpose of the original motion. But, but if, I mean, it may be annulity if, if it, if it indeed hasn't, if the amendment hasn't gotten a second. If it hadn't got a second, yeah, it's, it's just technicality. But my, my feeling was that the original motion was the, 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 the purpose, the original motion was to appoint an assistant city or an interim city manager. And he just amended who it was. Right. Okay. So that would have been, it's germane to the, it's germane to the motion and it's unacceptable then. It would be the way I would have read it and.
But does it, is the main would void the primary?
No, the primary, the primary part of the motion was to appoint a interim city manager.
Not necessarily who it was. It's not to appoint, it's who it was.
Well, it's.
That's true.
The motion was.
I'd say that's true.
Anyway, it's an, it's a moot point because it didn't get seconded. But I would have, I would have done.
Still, this is the technicalities of the Robert's rules that for this moment, unless.
So you're saying that we can't amend the original motion?
Well, I'm. Because it, it nullifies the first motion.
It was a totally different motion.
We put the people who had, would moved and made the motion and seconded the motion in a position of having to then oppose their own, their own motion if the amendment passed. That's why I'm saying would defeat the purpose of the original motion. In other words, the, the people who, who put the motion forward would then have to oppose it because the, the subject matter had so changed as to, as to be the opposite of what, what, what they originally.
It wasn't an event, it was a challenge of the motion.
You know, it's the same motion, just for difference to, let's change it.
Can we go on to your show, Mr.?
If, if the mayor has, has asked for and not received a second on the amendment, like, like Councilmember Royal said, then we're back to the original motion.
The motion on the floor made by the mayor, seconded by Mr. Tolan.
Councilmember Carter?
No.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Royal?
Yes.
Councilmember Digglebale?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
It's motion to access. City manager RHP consideration and possible action regarding RHP position of city manager. I make a motion to go out for a key to the decision of city manager salary range of 80 to 120,000 dollars. Sorry, this is from my notes. So please be put on TML LinkedIn, indeed, and cite that Mr. Tolan's not.
Just pull Texas. Bid net direct.
Bid net direct.
We'll do back by March 7.
Thank you. And they are due by March 7th at 12.
I'm sorry, um, TML, LinkedIn, bid net direct and I think. Indeed.
With the 80 to 120,000 dollar range. Due March 7th at 12. I said it. Motion on the floor made by the mayor, seconded by Ms. Howard.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Royal?
Yes.
Councilmember Digglebale?
Yes.
Council, uh, Mayor Smith?
Yes, motion to access. Let's go back to the beginning of, of the agenda to the proclamation of the monarch pledge. This is already on, so I do make the proclamation. Everybody can read it. It's a beautiful proclamation. Now therefore, I need some mayor of the town of Laguna Vista, Texas, to do your proclamation to the town of Laguna Vista, the whole state and the mayor's monarch pledge. And I urge all citizens to work together with the city to create a healthy habitat for the monarch butterfly to sustain and sprint and continue safe migrations throughout.
You're only about this.
Yeah. I was just going to say, really just note that signature is separate, but I can see change. Then back to consent agenda items, minutes of December 21.
I'll second it.
I make an amendment up there for, um, minutes for December. Uh, to, to note, uh, the absence of Mr. Ozuna.
On the December 14th meeting? Well, there's no discussion, so Mr. is.
That's in there.
Do that separate.
Yeah, so.
So Mr. Royal, you exempt item A and B. So we're going to discuss C separately since there was an. So Mr. Royal, motion on the floor to say.
For A and B.
A and B.
That acceptable? Yes.
And bring, I'm sorry, who's second?
Motion on the floor, Mr. Royal, seconded by Mr. Porter.
All right. So then, um, Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan? Councilmember Royal?
Yes.
Councilmember Digglebale?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes, motion to access. I can see minutes consideration and action to approve the minutes for December 4th for regular, you know, some discussion at the stores, you know, was not present, was not present. So that needs to be written by, please, right? Anything else? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 14th meeting with the correction. Motion on the floor made by the mayor, seconded by Ms. Howard, Rainey.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Warrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Degobio?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes, motion to access. Back to item seven, new business discussion, consideration of possible action, according to the quality of financial reports, a review, review of monthly reports, Mr. Mesa.
Yes. Randy and I worked on the different items that were zero, that were budgeted, so we worked within each of the departments to work with the here funds to cover some of that, and then we have an addendum that was put for the.
That's the next, that's the next slide.
Yeah, so if you have any questions right now, and then.
So the seven, I do seven A is the budget of maintenance, consideration of possible action to improve the budget. Where exactly is the budget from, in which ways? It's the.
In front of the.
Very first pages and number three. This is the third department, I mean, I'm number, tab number two.
Tab number two. Okay, starting with, we provided by departments, so the first one, City Hall, so we got from the, we're moving for the fund balance, money received from the Mercury Fund, thirty four thousand, and we placed it to account number one hundred five oh nine fifty for the employee one time check, which was the two thousand of COVID stipends. And much yet replaced there, to cover that, the next one is the matching grant funds, and that was for the E D A with the Eco Tourism Center, and it was a hundred and seventy three thousand nine hundred and forty eight on balance, and we moved it to, to cover the cost at the six, the six three five hundred, one hundred and hundreds, which was, it equals the ten thousand seven forty plus a hundred and fifty seven thousand eight hundred and eight as what was moved from the fund balance, was a hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred and forty eight. And that, that will be reimbursed to us, a hundred and fifty seven thousand, and also the ten thousand seven forty.
And we, why, for those reports, thanks? Have you requested those reports, please?
Yeah, we're, not yet, right, we haven't done that yet, we're gonna have to do that, they wanted to, the county wants us to get all of it together to do one, one request, just some others funds that we're gonna get from the county.
So that's a lot of money that then we, but we still have a lot of that.
Yes, but we can request.
It can be requested anytime.
So, partner.
The money that we received, what did we receive in money? For the first two, money's received from A R F, the matching grant.
Okay, that's the, the money received from A R F came with the three hundred and eighty three thousand.
But when?
That was what, two?
I don't know the exact dates, sorry, I'll find it, but it was about, about like two months ago, October.
Is this just for your last this year?
It was just this year. Yes.
Well, if it's in October, it should be.
Anything else, Mr. Tolan?
Well, that's not right, they're not in fund balance yet. This current year hasn't been closed out, they haven't, they haven't gotten it yet. Just a technicality.
So, so what would it, what would I say, so what, what it, what would it need to be, how would I, how would I do that?
You need to do a do from, do to, do from, from that fund.
But in my, in my head, I couldn't do that until that's approved, because if I put in a do to, do from, and then you guys don't approve it, then I have to go back and undo it.
Well, this is still wrong for your way.
So what would I do?
You need to do a do to, do from, and then do this, you need to do this out of fund balance, to do a do to, do from, to pay it back.
Okay. Mr. Tolan, Mr. Mesa? Oh, sorry, is there a reason of adjustments?
It's a typo across the board, it stayed at this top, at the one at the bottom, yeah, it's on all of them, because I just copied it, and it was in a rush, so that is my thoughts, and I apologize.
Any other discussion, or things that you feel like I should point out, for myself? Mr. Tolan?
The one for public works, are we going through all of them, or we?
Yeah.
Yes, if you want by one?
Please, please.
Okay, so, okay, I might have made a question beside the public works, one, we did have a balance.
That's the. That's the last, yeah.
On the chief, on the, on police department, on chief P O. Do you see where we were gonna get that from?
About. But just right there. Right. That, that's, that's the correct, that's the correct. And this one, the question, on balance, not actually straight up.
When you have some questions?
Yes.
The fifteen, the one thousand didn't get moved down for some reason in the formula, so the one thousand from, do you want to answer? I'm so.
No, you, you go ahead, you're working with together, no, go ahead.
Um, we're taking the one thousand dollars from Pete, that is, is overtime that was budgeted for him, we'll move it down to the overtime in Mr. Ramirez, and then it would balance out, three thousand dollars. So, I do apologize.
The sick pay for Mr. Bettis, can we explain that? Mr. Mesa? Sick pay for Bettis, okay?
Yes, what happened? Oh, see, that was, that was a mistake, actually.
That was a mistake.
Well, we do not give sick pay for, for people leaving, and I just noticed that.
Oh, we did, we already, they elected.
Yeah, I know, but it, it wasn't supposed to be there, I just realized.
It wasn't supposed to happen?
Yes, we don't give, when people are, have resigned, we don't give them sick leave, that's.
Or vacation.
Vacation, yes.
If they resign, according to the personal policy? We might wanna look over that. So we paid out Mr. Bettis.
Four hundred and twelve bucks.
For four hundred and twelve dollars.
That should not have.
I realize, disgusting.
Well, that's not good. Whose responsibility was that?
Eventually, it's my responsibility, but it was, it was presented to me by, you know, the human resources, and I thought that was correct.
Any other discussion? Do we have a motion to accept the question of amendments, or any changes? With the change reasons of protest. That means we change the uses of protest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can change it before they get into the.
Mr. Tolan?
Okay, so. Down on page two, on general government. There's items that don't have budget amendments, that are still negative.
Which one?
Auto insurance.
So.
Training and education.
Okay, just start this one.
Two.
Two of the general government. Grants, E D A project, grant.
So, the, the grant ones are the ones that are, that were taken from the, the hundred and seventy three thousand nine hundred and forty eight? So those three are in the budget amendments.
So once it gets approved, then it all.
Right, I didn't.
Sixty three, six hundred. I don't see sixty three, six hundred.
So where it says Eco Tourism Center, Mr. Carter, should I should have put the sixty three, six hundred, but it says Eco Tourism Center for the one fifty seven, eight oh eight?
First.
When somebody said that?
Yes, the, I'm sorry about that.
Like six, was it water or disaster?
Yeah, I don't have the account number listed, I just wrote Eco Tourism Center, and I should have had the sixty three, six hundred written as well.
Well, how do we have, like, if, if we budgeted fifteen hundred dollars for training and education? And year to date, we have twenty eighty two in there, how did it just increase? Page two, um, and it is account code sixty three, seven, zero.
So that's a two thousand eight hundred and eighty two is what we've actually spent, and where it means we have overspent by one thousand three hundred and eighty two.
On training and education.
Yes.
So we didn't do any budget amendments to.
For those.
For those.
We were focused on both.
Budget amendment, that is all, you're right.
Correct.
No, budget amendment for auto insurance, neither, correct?
Correct.
Books and subscriptions?
That is not in the, that is not in the budget amendment as well.
Seven, um, public safety. Permanent insurance are negatives.
Actually, that one, I, I have, I've gotta figure out how to do, there's something about the way, because we pay Chief David out of the fire, I have to figure out how, because his benefits are partially coming out of the fire, even though we didn't budget it out of the fire, so I have to figure out the percentage that's coming out of fire, that's versus coming out of the police department fight, and, you know, all the, the fringe benefits, and I just haven't had time to figure out that calculation, because his earning code is for Chief David, and so, but he also has an earning code in the fire department, and so it's, that's why we're, that's why it's accumulating, but I just have to figure out how to fix it. So that's why there's not a budget amendment at this time.
Well, we understand, we had a crazy day, and a crazy few days, so. So I know we're working on this, up and running, I know you had a lot of questions today, but that was not quite applied, so we underdo others. Any other discussion, the warning, the budget amendments? Making motion to accept the budget amendments, when it's pointed out. Please record by those.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion on the floor? Motion on the floor, made by the mayor, seconded by Mr. Laurel, to accept the budget amendments.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Warrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Degobio?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
I can be, also July fireworks, consideration of possible action, on fact of fire, of Texas.
Yes, we contacted Chris Stanley, the Sheriff of Texas, and he gave us three options, which was, there's gonna be a fifty percent increase, because like it's COVID and everything, but it would cost for ten minute show, it costs eleven thousand five hundred, and for the same value that we had last year for ten thousand, it would be a seven minute show, and a twelve minute show would cost fourteen thousand. I had, now that July point is gonna be on a Monday, I asked if they had the Friday that we usually have on Friday, the first, and they're holding it for us, to see if we wanted on the Friday, I checked with Saturday, and they said right now it's taken, but if they, well, we could have it, but I think the Friday, we always had it on Friday, so.
We've got Friday.
Yes.
What's Friday's day?
The first, July first.
And he's gotta, he's gotta write a bullet.
Yes, and we just have to tell them no tomorrow, so we could, he's, he's on reserve right now.
Yeah.
But he wants to know as soon as possible, and then we went to the C D C to ask for some funding, and they agreed to pay up to seventy, seventy five hundred?
Seven thousand five hundred, and they strongly encouraged fourteen minute show.
Yeah, but, yeah, the twelve minute show.
How much was the twelve minute?
Fourteen thousand, so I know last year, of you, we raised seven thousand, which.
Actually, we have that in motion, I have to.
And, and the way they came to this idea about the fourteen minutes, if you divide the dollar amount by the time, there was not a big difference between the ten and the twelve minutes.
Yeah.
That's why they. Any discussion? So we, so they said they'll fund seven thousand five hundred, that means they'll have to come up with another six thousand five hundred. We raised seven thousand dollars last year by donation, so.
Yes.
Something that's very feasible, I.
It is, it is, and now they want us to go out to, you know, just a recommendation, have everyone included, just, you know, and I did send it out to let people know if they could donate five, ten, if they wanted, just to. To cover some, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Any other discussion? Maybe put it on the website?
Yes.
And, because you can only write through the website right now, and putting it back in the newsletter to, so, that, because five bucks from two people, considering, that's a great idea.
But do we have to commit to which show we want right now, or just we'll do a show?
Just the minutes, yeah, just, look, I think the minutes.
How many?
Yes.
Because that'll determine the deposit, correct?
Yes, that's the term of deposit, but we could tell them, you know, like you said, we want it better presented.
Yeah, I, I'd like to talk to them, I'd like to have somebody talk to them, I was disappointed.
Look at the more imagination.
Yeah.
So, motion on the floor? This is, it was the same guy.
I wrote, yeah, I wrote, yeah.
I don't believe for a second it was the same guy.
The same designer.
Yeah.
Motion? I'll make a motion. Yeah. Were you gonna go nearly?
Oh, twelve, you said, said fourteen.
Fourteen thousand.
It was confusing at the meeting also.
Twelve minutes, fourteen thousand.
I'll make a motion to prove fire, fireworks, for the July fireworks show, for July the first, for the twelve minute show. I'll say that. Motion on the floor by the mayor, seconded by Mr. Degobio.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Still with us, I'm thinking. Yes.
Um, councilmember Warrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Degobio?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes, motion to security, that was discussion of possible actions towards on security, that was, we still only have two birds.
Yes.
Mr. Mesa, how aggressive did you just?
We went to go, and we used the equipment that we want, it's, it's a specialized security system, and because we're a government, we're a city, we have to meet some standards, so we presented to the different, we went to local companies, and they do a lot of, you know, islands in America, China, and very low cost, but as a city, we can't have that, you know, we have. Yes, and so we tried, people were given, said that they don't have enough staff to get the, and it was gonna be hard to, you know, the equipment, and these are the two that we have, unless you want, I mean, we could wait and try to get another one, but that's what we had, so.
Did you look into redoing the products to see what? Did you look into redoing the products to see which one is? More bankrupt here? Like the cameras themselves?
He's secure, he's our, our I T guy. And then this barcom is the one that could, could do that, but I mean.
Did you compare any of these products, is this exactly the same, this new is completely different what they provide?
Yes, the one, the part right here.
So there's both of them is ten cameras. I mean, what did they say, what did, what did they, they?
They said, they, yes, they're, they're both professional, I mean, they're both. Equipment that are, are commercial, that are for what we need, that meet requirements for most municipalities, but they're different, I mean, they're different. Styles and stuff like that, but.
Are the different amounts, right?
Well, no, one is, one is private, private five, so they're both amounts ten.
That's five and five.
They're five and five.
They're both ten.
But why, why, why does he split it up to a hundred foot camera and a hundred and sixty-five?
My only guess is that the hundred foot is for close, for in turn, and the hundred and sixty-five, if that. Matters anything for, by the basketball board, if you see color, I'm not sure. I think we need to have these guys present.
Yeah, I was going to say, to present them.
And I would like to see third one.
Also, the barcom people are out of San Antonio, the other guys local.
Yeah. So we can do, like I said, we could. Try again for a third one.
So we just more information. Do we already know the locations for the, and cameras, do we know that we're in ten cameras?
Yes, yes.
Do we have one at the library?
I have to check out that, I think this was just for here.
This is just for the simple. I need to go back on the.
That would be.
What did you say?
That would be important.
Yeah. That would be a different, a whole different bullpen, though, I think, because that, I'm not sure, I don't understand how these things work, so I wonder if that camera being included in this system, since they go around with Wi-Fi, I would imagine. I don't know, but I think that's a valid one that we just throw in there. I mean, I, I see that they have routers, that they have. That they have wireless bridges.
Yes.
Whatever that means.
That's right, what, yeah.
I'm assuming.
We have.
Because the cameras definitely are not always in a Wi-Fi range of the office.
So, so what would happen is, my, I was not involved in the quotes, but from, from what limited that I just know, is the library has their own server, so they, I mean, the, the cost would probably be similar, but we're only going to need one or two cameras. They would have, you know, it would be a service at the library with their cameras off their server, because we're going to want to record it, you know, we're going to need it somewhere to save it, so, but the library does have their own server, and so it would work off of theirs, and so it, it will be similar, we might not need as, for the ra, broader range, you know, because here we're trying to shoot all the way across to the gazebo, one of them's on the gazebo, so, I mean, it might be, but, so yes, it can be done under the same big umbrella, but they'll probably be free, because, because there's a different servers. But yeah, it, it, it can be easily added to the quote, if we wanted.
How can we do that with a motion? That we can, is everybody okay with adding two cameras for that?
Easily put cameras anywhere you want, and then put them all to the same place, we do it in our neighborhood, there's cameras all over the place, and.
It comes to the same server.
Put them all to the same place. And it's just, it's just technology.
Or regardless, we want to add more cameras, I think we all want more information.
Information, have them speak. To present like.
So I will, I see a presentation.
I would like to see a presentation. So next, I make a motion to title this, I just told them this. Motion for my other mayor, second by this power to table this to the district.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Worel?
Yes.
Councilmember Diego Baio?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes, motion passes. I can be. Consideration of possible action to prove resolution twenty-two oh one to participate in Texas.
Part of the package, we have to do a resolution, which was brought up, Randy brought it back to us, and have to have that approved to start actually. Get into the system, even though we, we did got some quotes from there, but this is to finalize. The.
Sign up for it in October. It wasn't.
No, we can't pay until we provide a resolution.
Okay.
I mean, we can't.
We were not signed up, so we didn't buy any of our big items.
No, no, we got quotes to see how they were, but.
And they were not cheaper on the smart bike?
They were, they were similar, because we looked at them, and when Willie checked on that sheet, the gentleman, gentleman spoke to them from the, and said, yeah, we got this, this, that, and, but. I thought we had done that, to tell you the truth, but.
So would have been, yeah. Would they have been a monetary difference?
We have to look at that.
So and now we call the truck and the tractor, several big items, so we could have saved a lot of money. I think we had this on our agenda and statement. And whose responsibility was that?
My responsibility. What, I have presented it to, to the, like, everything that's happening has to go to me, but I had, I had set that to check into it at the time we received it, and I think I should vote, of you said, of Randy and Anna to check into it for me, and so. I didn't want to.
Well, I, I'm starting to use several months to sign up specifically to buy the truck and the tractor and the big items with this program, and I submit this stuff.
You're sitting there.
So, as a partner.
A motion to approve resolution twenty-two oh one.
I have a question. Does, do our personnel changes affect us at all? She must spread it up.
No. Is our what?
On the resolutions. Remember the resolutions right now?
Oh, yeah, the names are, we probably just have to write. I think until eighteen, it's so fun, I told for tomorrow, if I do it tomorrow, this is eighteen, it's so very fun.
So it causes trouble down low?
It should. Only. This is a, this is, this is not the important place, so. Listen to the age of the record at the time. For the, for the working, I can also be modified with the, with the Bible Word, in fact, when, when the town appoints a permanent city manager, will want to make sure that any instance of the listing that individual is making record, the, the change or.
Other questions? Motion on the floor, my goodness, for the second by the mayor.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Worel?
Yes.
Councilmember Diego Baio?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes, sign order, discussion of possible action, we found sign ordinance twenty-eighteen oh one.
I just made a motion to postpone this until next week.
Motion on the floor, my goodness, for all. I was just going to say. Motion on the floor, my goodness, for all, saying that my, I was told that to table this, so to read.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Worel?
Yes.
Councilmember Diego Baio?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Uh, yes, the parks last one I've been working on for the last six, six months. We sent it, I sent this, the presentations to the committee, I'm sorry. I'm off the track, sent to different committees for their, and I got some input from them, I incorporated here, you sent it to the Texas Parks Wildlife, except there was, there did see some more items in there, which I added, and what you have is the final draft for your review approval, and when you approve it, they, you send it back to Texas Parks Wildlife, and then they'll review it again, and if there's any changes, they'll, they'll let us know.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Um, so you've got pages. Twenty-four through twenty-seven of the old parks planned in.
Okay, that's just to show where we got some information, they, they want, because, yeah, if you see the, the appendix. They have, where they have copies of what was the, the survey, what it looked like, it was example, and some of the research we did, it was not that we, we use the old. The information from the comprehensive plan, that's what's from sixty-five. Two page, yes, sixty-five. Through.
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, it's just showing what we had planned before. And those changes on line, they just want to show that we did our research in different aspects, that at one time the city was, had a parks plan, had, you know, we, we did the survey, they just want to show that this wasn't just done, they want proof that we did a lot of things, so, that's, that's one of the reasons.
They want, we did some of the stuff that was on the old plan, or they want.
They just want to see that, yeah.
Okay. It's no secret that. The marina, for, for very long time.
Yes.
And two of the things that the management void from here. Are on here, or if the town takes it over or changes.
Yeah. This was, yeah.
Last night, on the email, but today is a probably, I have.
I mean.
Unfortunately, none of time to go over.
Yeah, and then you could table it and, and go over it and send it to whatever.
I would like more time, because this is important. No, I think we instructed you in. Twenty nineteen to start on this, or, yeah, it's been over here, but it's a big theory, I know you work for it.
Yeah.
A lot of the information I think is done in the same. And then, and then there's stuff from, and then there's, there's, there's stuff from the old plan, that. Not direction.
But regardless, I personally would need more time.
I'll have the, I have the whole thing, so.
As I requested before, to give all papers on Friday, so we are trying to review.
We just have.
I know, and I, so I didn't personally review it, any other discussion? I'll make a motion to table this to the district. Those are. My goodness, the mayor.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Worel?
Yes.
Councilmember Diego Baio?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
I just want to say something. Um, I know we've gone through a lot of challenges right now, there's a lot of new things happening, I want to thank all you all for the hard work and dedication of the U S bank of staff, for everything you're doing, keeping the ship afloat. Randy, congratulations, and being a winner of this interview, and trust you with exposition, we fully expect and know that you and you chief will help. As you always have, and, and done everything in your power to make sure we still continue on, and, until we find somebody new, whoever that might be, and. Please reach out, any of you need anything from us, but we're, we're going to be short-staffed, and we're. Going to come up with a plan how to combat that, and we're all here for you guys, we're all here to support our city and make sure it becomes the, you know, stays. Slow, follow me, it's slow, but become brighter and brighter every day.
Thank you.
Motion to, motion to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn. Motion on the floor to adjourn, second by Mr. Wall.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard? Did you see us, I'm sorry, Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Worel? Councilmember Diego Baio?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes, second by the mayor.